We have that all, okay. I can be heard, right? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Village of Marineric budget session, budget work session for what's today, April 4th, 2022. We're going to be doing two emergency service departments, but before we do that, let me just say that we asked the budget committee members if they would like to come and, and nobody's here. All right, we'll go back to the budget committee if they come later. First up on the agenda then.
Tom, I think, I think the budget committee is coming tomorrow.
Okay, good, good. All right, thank you. Got my days mixed up. Excellent. Should go Billy quickly tonight because I came right from work and didn't eat, so let's, let's move with a lap ready.
There's some kind of like reverberating noise coming. I don't know what it is.
Augie, is your laptop muted? I am muted. All right, is everybody, how's that? Everybody here is muted, except we're on the.
It still comes when you're speaking. It sounds like somebody's kind of tapping the microphone.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to deal with that. The first up, Augie, kill your sound part on your, on your computer.
My sound is killed. That's why there's no yellow circle around it. You can't hear.
No, no, that's your microphone. What I'm talking about is your sound where it picks up.
My speakers are killed also.
Your speakers are killed also. My speakers are killed and my sound is killed. So that's the only thing in the room picking up sound, right?
Yes. That's it. Sound is nice.
All right. First up, we're gonna have is our illustrious fire department. I see we have Chief Costa on the line and also Chief Simmons Simpson. Chief, do you want to walk us through and tell us about your budget?
All right, so actually, hold on one second. Good. Good, okay. All right, so I'm starting out with the, the increases I am looking at here for purchasing agent, council secretary and the, the cleaners for each firehouse. Hold on, I'm sorry. Let me load the radio.
We're gonna try to get this on the screen. It should be up in a minute. There it is.
Thank you, Jerry.
Sorry, Ben, Augie's got control over the screen.
Okay. So as you can see, I'm looking to increase the purchasing agent by a thousand and all the rest $500 or an increase of percentage increases I had spoken to the manager about.
Okay, but a 500 is just for the secretary, right?
It's gonna be for the secretary and then the, all the cleaners that clean each firehouse.
Well, what you have in the budget here is $105 for each cleaner.
So for mayor, what, what?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, Jerry.
Yeah, what the chief and I negotiated was he had asked for a big bump, but what I said was it would be, it would be better for us to give them the two and a half percent like the CSEA would be receiving this year and then, you know, another two and a half percent consideration for next year in the budget. So it was 105 increase for our 10. I think we have 10 cleaners.
Yeah.
And that's what the chief Costa and I negotiated.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had my notes. I didn't write it down there.
So to separate what we want from what we got. What other changes do we have, my friend?
All right. So on the, the radio line, 0256, we are raising that $4,000. It's basically $1,000 for each firehouse. I have to add more equipment for the dispatch system that was upgraded with our county control.
Yeah. And Vinny, I don't know if board has really kept up on it or not, but county control is supposed to go transition very soon, if I can recall.
Yes, they did the first phase of the, the, the operations communications in all the apparatus and now they're doing, they're in the process of and almost ready to activate the new paging, the alert systems, which we have to update our equipment for.
That requires new pages?
Yes, we did. We purchased some already and we're gonna have to purchase more.
So one of those pages, so it's different than the pages that we used to have 25 years ago. These are audible pages, right?
That is correct, yes. Yeah.
Comes across, you know, an alarm at, you know, 620 Prospect or something like that, right?
Yes, yep, and it has a feature to play it back. So if you want to hear the address again or whatever have you, and there's other options that we can listen to other frequencies also, like our fire ground. So it's, it's a, it's a big difference from years in the past.
Yep.
All right.
The next one is in 258, which has to do with self-contained breathing apparatus, our air packs, our bottles, and also our masks. I'm increasing that a little bit as the cost of these items are going up.
Okay, just, just for people who are watching at home, this is the equipment that the firemen put on when, when they're, they're going into any fire, but particularly a smoke condition. It's a very tight fitting mask. They have an oxygen tank on their back and that mask has to be fitted for each fire department person. Is that right, Ben?
That is correct.
And you know, this is, you can't fight interior fires without this apparatus.
Right, and each year we try to, we replace SEBA bottles or air tanks that are expiring.
What other changes do we have?
So we have in the automotive repairs. We raised that $10,000 due to the supply chain issues and, and equipment issues and the cost increase for equipment to repair our apparatus and the cost of labor for that repair of the apparatus.
And chief ma- mayor and, and board, I think some of them, if not all of them are aware that Excelsior shut down, was operating kind of like independent, but I think the department has secured a new vendor, I hope, very soon.
Yes, we have, we have two we're using right now, just in case one is not available.
Where, where are they, chief?
One is in Brewster off of 684 and the other one is a, a company out of Briar Cliff that actually will come down on the road to do a repair if we have something going on here.
That, that's a shame. We lost Excelsior right as we're in a corner.
Oh, yeah. We were spoiled for many years.
Yeah.
The next one is building improvements. I increased that by 10,000 because I have to add the replacement of an on-demand water heater for Station 1.
Chief, Station 1 is a new firehouse on Palmer?
Palmer Avenue, yeah. Yeah, the new firehouse. We keep saying new firehouse. It's about 11 years old, 12 years old now. And then I believe it's the last one. I have an increase of $500 for our post or Explorer post 444, which is our junior membership, which is part of the Boy Scouts. Last year we had eight members. This year we have 17, so it has increased. So I'm looking to increase that line for equipment for the members of the, of the post, the junior fire department. And for those of you that don't know, the post is not, yeah, I'd say 90% of the post members become full Village of Marineric Fire Department members and continue on as regular members in our department.
So it's like your AAA team?
Yes, exactly.
And we call them up?
Yeah, that's it for me at the moment.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief while we have him here? But I, I just want to say during the flood, you know, the September 1st, September 2nd event, the chief, all three chiefs, you know, the, the Hapus, all of these gentlemen and, and Ms. Barney, Jessica Barney, all of them worked non-stop. I got a chance to see Ms. Barney and Mr. Hughes close up at the Emergency Operations Center and, you know, no matter what time I went there, they were there. And we all owe the whole gang a debt of gratitude for that time and, you know, the many, many other instances that they've responded to that we, we don't hear about and we don't know about. But my God, you, you folks really went above and beyond the call and I just want to point that out to folks who are watching and folks who might not know it. And to thank you, chief, and the other chiefs and all the way down the line to even explorers were there. So, you know, the, the, they got some practical experience on how to handle emergencies from the pros. So I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome, mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, one other thing that I want to, and, and I'm asking Chief Costa to remind me, as we're doing, as we're finalizing our after-action report, we started gathering the emblems, the logos of all of the different entities that helped us and even I had no idea. So, so Vinny, how many, how many departments did we end up getting help from?
It was, I believe it was 46 departments.
46 departments came to help us during that flood and when we do our after-action report, one of the things that I've assigned to another staff member is to display with pride and with gratitude all of those emblems, as many as we can get, because it was not just a few or a gang. It was more than I would ever have expected to show up, so. I know they won't come if they didn't like us, so that's for sure. So we really appreciate that as well.
Yeah, we really did.
Amazing.
And I just want to, I, I always point this out. We talk about the flood. You know, a lot, a lot of our close municipalities not only sent their fire departments to be sent their DPWs to help out for days and days and I'll never forget Linda Puglisi, who I wouldn't know if I've tripped over before this, who's all the way up in Cortland, New York, about as far away from the Village of America as you could possibly get in Sylvan, Worcester County, volunteered her whole DPW for a week with equipment. And that was an extremely unselfish act that hurt us out, that helped us out a lot. And, you know, you don't see that a lot in government. And she's retired now, but I just want to point out that when we were on our back, Cortland came through in a clutch. Anybody else for the fire department, questions, concerns? Okay, hearing done, chief. Thank you very much. Get back to your family.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for all your work. It's really very heartwarming what you do for this village.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for standing behind us.
Take care, chief.
Take care now.
Okay. The next up to bat is the other popular chief of police, Sandra DeRusa. Hey, chief.
Hi, okay. I know you said you didn't have lunch. I put a presentation together, but you want to forego that and just go to the budget?
No, 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 no.
Okay, because that would be fine too. All right, hold on.
I could miss a meal or two.
All right.
Thank you. You don't want to see him hangry.
I know, it's, it's. All right, so let me just see how I have to do this to share a screen. Okay, so, Augie, just walk me through how I share my PowerPoint at the bottom, share screen, right?
Share screen and then you pick the screen you want to share.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Everyone can see it?
Yep.
Okay. So this is for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Again, our acronym, vision, mindfulness, professionalism and dedication, VMPD. Okay, so I include this as I did last year, our mission statement. So I don't know if you want me to go ahead and read that, but.
Go ahead and read it, sir.
Okay, to make sure I can see this here. Okay, so we, the members of the Village of Marineric Police Department strive to promote and enhance quality of life for all who live and work in the village in which we serve. With dedication to professionalism and integrity in our duties, we pledge to maintain a safe and friendly community. In partnership with the community, we pledge to protect the lives and property of our fellow residents and impartially enforce the law, fight crime to prevention and by aggressively pursuing violators of the law, maintain a higher standard of integrity than is generally expected of others because so much is expected of us, value human life, respect the dignity of each individual and render our services in a professional, courteous and civil manner. So in here is also an org chart, which basically lays out all of our positions from lieutenants, sergeants, all the way down to police officers. So some background information. So the Village of Marineric has approximately 20,151 residents. Our 2010 census numbers were at 18,929. 2020 was 20,151, which was an increase of 1,222 or 6.5%. We are approximately 6.6 square miles, which includes 3.2 land and 3.4 water. We are budgeted for 51 sworn police officers and more than 40 other employees, including bay constables, administrative staff, part-time employees and seasonal employees. We currently have a fleet of 29 vehicles, which includes two motorcycles, two boats, eight hybrid engine vehicles, 14 gas engine vehicles, one canine vehicle, one prisoner van and one trailer. We are looking to replace five gas engine vehicles this year with hybrid vehicles. Some statistics going back for the last couple of years, calls for service, moving violations, parking violations, arrest, criminal investigations, youth investigations or interactions, domestic violence incidents and training hours. So just a couple of things that I'll highlight here. Our calls for service did increase for a couple of reasons. We had some increase to our, what we call our grounds checks due to increased activity and complaints in our local parks. We had increases in our aided cases or calls for service due to COVID-19 and a 35% increase in our abandoned vehicle calls due to Hurricane Ida. In terms of our moving violations, we're still kind of coming out of the pandemic and we had some decrease in our interactions with motorists because the pandemic was still ongoing. We did have officers out on line of duty injury during that year.
If those, those beetles are available again, what do you think?
I would love that. Great, I would love it. So what else? Let's see, our youth investigations or interactions also increased due to children no longer being remote. They're back in school. So we've had some issues dealing with them last year. And our training hours have increased now that things have opened up again with the pandemic and with police reform. So for crimes, we have part one and part two offenses. Our part one offenses are considered to be violent crimes and includes murder, manslaughter, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny and motor vehicle theft. In 2022, if I can move this up somewhere, there we go. Sorry, 2021, we had 241 reported part one offenses and most of those were larceny type offenses, including theft from motor vehicles as well as ID theft. So false unemployment claims was rampant last year as well as opening of fraudulent bank accounts and credit card unauthorized authorizations, things of that nature. For our part two crimes, which are considered to be less violent offenses, the majority of those were considered all other offenses, which would be criminal contempt charges and criminal mischief forth charges included also were simple assaults and just regular criminous, criminal mischiefs to vehicles and houses and things like that. So last year when I presented, I had some goals for 2021. So just to give you an update on how we made out with those goals. So we wanted to complete the process for New York State accreditation that is still ongoing. We wanted to update and revise our manual, manual procedure, which is still ongoing. To institute police reform recommendations, we have some of those completed and it's still ongoing. Acquire and deploy body worn cameras. We were awarded a grant in December of last year. So we're moving forward with that. So obviously with grant money, that is saving the village some monies. We are looking to continue to enhance our departmental training and that includes our procedural justice, which we did complete two modules of that de-escalation. We did complete that last year. Crisis intervention training. We had four officers complete that last year, so we now have 14 overall. Persons with special needs, we created a persons with special needs registry that people can sign up for. Victims of domestic violence are lethality assessment tool. We completed training in that. To implement active bystandership for law enforcement, we've completed that. Implement community liaison officers. We were able to have four officers certified last year as community resource officers. We want to increase community engagement. That's completed and ongoing. We institute foot patrols, completed ongoing. Create a Village Mac Police Department website and an Instagram page. We were able to complete the website, which is in both English and Spanish and we were able to create that in-house. So we also saved a lot of money by having Joe Marceli complete that.
So you go back one, one, just one last question. Victim of domestic violence, lethality assessment tool. Could you talk to that a little bit? What's that mean?
Absolutely. So anytime an officer responds to a domestic incident, they do have to fill out a state form, which is a domestic incident report. In addition to that, there is what's called a lethality assessment tool. So basically what that is, it's in addition to the domestic incident report, it's a 12-page, a 12-question questionnaire that in cases of domestic violence where it's intimate relation, intimate partner relationship, it's additional questions to see what are the odds or the risk of that person being killed in that relationship. So if they answer certain questions, the officer puts the victim in touch with an advocate right then and there on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Great program, something.
It is. So in addition to those, some of our other accomplishments for 2021, we had created a recruitment flyer and video. We were awarded a critical infrastructure grant, again, saving village money. We participated in police reform and reinvention meetings and we completed the report that was submitted to the governor's office. We continue to maintain a high level of service to the community during the ongoing pandemic. We provided security and safety during the highest attended 4th of July event. Continue to provide service and support for the community during tropical storm Isaias and Hurricane Ida. We hosted a community night out event. We participated in coffee with a cop event. We appointed one officer to the rank of detective. We appointed one sergeant as an accreditation manager. We promoted four officers to the rank of sergeant. We promoted one sergeant to the rank of lieutenant. We were selected as one of four departments to participate in the 911 diversion pilot program, which has to do around, has to do with mental, calls for mental health services. We rewarded the body worn camera grant and we participated in various New York State traffic enforcement initiatives. So looking forward towards this year, a couple of things that we want to do. We want to complete the process for New York State accreditation to be all set for next year's site visit. Continue to update and revise the manual procedure. Continue to institute police reform recommendations. Acquire and deploy body worn cameras. Continue to enhance our departmental training, which would include implicit bias and crisis intervention training. Continue community engagement events. Continue with foot patrols. Acquire both fixed and mobile LPRs throughout the village to aid in investigations. Partner with Guardian Score to enhance community relations and implement some officer wellness initiatives.
Chief, LPL license plate reader?
Yep, so the license plate readers, so right now we have them in some of our cars. What I would like to do is if funding is available through some, some capital budget or some remaining funding to have both fixed and possibly mobile LPRs, license plate readers that we can affix to some of our trailers that we have. Right now, we're one of the only municipalities that don't have fixed license plate readers. So obviously having those, we're able to investigate and solve more crimes because you can see office, cars are traveling in and out of the community. We actually had something a couple of months ago where our officers stopped a stolen vehicle that we were notified about that was coming into our jurisdiction from an LPR that was in your shell. We were able to take that person into custody without incident. And that is it.
So the LPRs are for ongoing moving violation type things or I'm not quite sure how you're using them?
So it's both. So LPRs can identify people who are driving with a suspended license, stolen vehicles. What we're finding now is there is a big issue throughout the county with the catalytic converters being stolen. So at, what will happen is if they're happening in a certain community, the LPRs, if they're fixed to poles and things like that, they'll catch the vehicles that are coming in and leaving the jurisdiction and with that information, they're able to identify the vehicles and then further identify suspects and put patterns together with other communities that experiencing the same types of crimes.
Chief, a question about the 911 diversion program. When, when you, first of all, how many calls do, have you been able to divert? And when, when you send someone else, who is it?
Yep, so what we've done, so it's a pilot program that started about July or August of last year. So what happens is the person has to meet a certain criteria. So when an officer receives a phone call, they have what's basically a flow chart. So they have to ask the person certain questions and if the person, if they're in need of certain services, what happens is the officer will put them in touch with a crisis, crisis network person that they've contracted with. So basically it would be what they call a warm handoff, where they would introduce the caller that's going to the crisis network person and then they would further advocate for services. So right now, yep, go ahead.
So, so the, the officer would respond, but then hand the call off?
So not necessarily. So it depends on what the call is. If it's something where the person is experiencing some sort of mental crisis, but it's not an emergency, they just basically need someone to talk to. They're not imitantly looking to harm themselves. The best solution there would be to. The best solution there would be to have them speak to someone who is specially trained, uh, with mental health services. So the officer would then transfer them over to this crisis net crisis network line.
Well, this is phone work. It's not actually people going to the, uh, to the call.
So that's correct. Only if after speaking with someone from the crisis team that they would identify that they need further services or they need police department to respond. Then people would actually respond to the location.
This was one of the, uh, suggestions of the police reform committee.
Sure, sure.
Correct.
And, and we are, we, we, we were lucky to be, uh. Picked as one of the communities to start the file program.
Correct. So I, Augie, if you want to pull up, I guess, the, um, budget, please?
There it is. Uh, it starts on page fifty-one. There you go, chief.
Okay. So obviously some things I don't have control over in terms of salaries and things like that. Um, for the canine officer, which would be line ten ninety, that was increased because the hourly rate. Um, has increased, so that, uh, item line has gone up. From sixty-seven.
The hourly rate had to be, chief?
I'm sorry?
Well, I, I didn't understand that the hourly rate?
So basically the way we figure out the stipend, it's based on hourly rate and then times, it's a formula for then certain hours and then, um, fifty-two weeks of the year.
Okay, gotcha.
So that line increased. Okay, and then we move along.
What is the dog vested for pension?
I, that I don't know. He hopefully has a couple more good years left, I hope. Okay, um, so then we have, um. Line thirty-one, twenty, zero, one, thirty-two, oh. So that's for watch persons. Park rangers. So. That line I've asked for an increase to keep the, uh, watch persons or park rangers in line with what the, um, crossing guards. Receive reimbursement. So I'm looking to increase their hourly rate from eighteen dollars and change to twenty dollars and change.
But chief, while we're on that line, can you just give a brief, uh, summary of what a part of watch person does just for folks?
Sure, of course. Yep. So we have about ten or eleven parks throughout the village. And what they will do is they work on, in from April to usually about November. They'll work evenings and weekends. So what they'll do is they will patrol the parks. Uh, they will look to ensure that, uh, people are, um, safe, that they are behaving appropriately. Um, if they identify any issues of concern, then they would notify a police officer and we would respond.
So they are not peace officers, that is?
That is correct. They are not. But they are, you know, the eyes and the ears for us in parks when we can't be there. Obviously, we can't be everywhere. So they are an integral part, um, of patrolling the parks in the, the peak seasons.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, then we have line, uh, thirty-one, twenty, zero, one, four, zero, ten, which would be our overtime line. So I am looking to increase that line. Uh, reason being is a couple of reasons, um, you know, as you are aware. Uh, with police reform, so a couple of things we want to do with that is we want to increase some community engagement. Unfortunately, officers aren't always working during the times of those engagements, so I can foresee us incurring costs for that. As well as incurring some cost, uh, for accreditation purposes. And another, um. Re- reason for the overtime is supervision. So with the addition of a sergeant that was created last year, that has helped tremendously with oversight of, of squads. Um, and I have done some changing of scheduling to ensure that. The, um, officers working, that there's always a boss, but there are times where officer sergeants might call in sick. Or there's vacations, so as much as possible, I want to be able to ensure that there's always a supervisor working the tour. To decrease, uh, village liability.
So can we stay stick with overtime for men, chief?
Yes.
Is this, is this all overtime or all went into one pot? Is that what, so reimbursement from, you know, for, uh, construction, you know, activities and that, all of that is in there?
Correct. So what, what happens is, and Augie, tell me if I get this right, so what happens is we pay. The police, the police department pays for the overtime that's incurred from, um, different projects that go out, that go on throughout the village. But when the monies comes back, it goes into a village fund. So we would have to then refund the line as needed.
So can we get an analysis of the overtime in terms of what was, uh, you know. From, I guess, last year or your projection for this year? For, uh, that type of overtime? Uh, is it, uh, because, uh, people have been out? You know, I, I think there are probably two, you know, two to four different categories that you might want, this is your department. I don't want to. Be, be judge how, how it's done, but it'd be helpful to have, as opposed to one lump figure to try and understand, you know, how it breaks down. So how mu- how much was reimbursable? How much was regular?
Yeah.
On reimbursement? Well, it's a little bit more than that. I'd like to know how much was incurred because of people being out, uh, you know, for a long time, et cetera.
Okay, give me a second. I have. Lots of paperwork here, and I know I actually did figure that out today. I just, I'm not, you know, obviously in my office, so I'm a little bit, so let's see.
She working?
Working at Empor's office.
Today I'm working out of the lieutenant's office.
He's the nomadic police chief.
Parapetetic chief, right?
Yep.
All right, my apologies. I'm gonna have to find, I do have it worked out in terms of.
It's not a problem. If you could send it to us, that would be helpful.
I will. Um, I actually have it separated by what was paid due to personnel issues being, um, line of duty, out sick. Um, things this, um, like arrests and then things for village projects details, things like that. So I will forward that to you as soon as we.
Great, super.
So I.
I did that you've already done it in anticipation.
Yes, so that was perfect. I just, I'm, I'm surprised I don't have it here, but I know I have.
Chief, can I ask a question about how they pay?
Yes.
Okay, if. If an officer. Isn't scheduled to work, let's say, the Fourth of July, right?
Yes.
Do they, they, they then get an eight-hour? Pay for that day?
So we get, they get paid for thirteen holidays a year that's separated into two different, um, timeframes, May and December. So the first half of the year, they get the first holiday, set of holidays, and the end of the year, they get the other paid holidays.
Also, they get two separate checks?
Correct.
So if I, uh, work on Fourth of July?
Yes.
They get. The holiday check no matter what? And then I get, do I get time and a half for Fourth of July?
Yes.
Even if it was my regular shift?
Yes, uh, if you're working, yes. So if you're working that day, you do get the extra money.
Now, okay, I, I, maybe I, I didn't put that right. You, you, you get the holiday pay no matter what?
Correct.
Working that way?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. There are only certain holidays where you get time and a half.
Okay.
I believe it's four or five.
Okay. And e- e- even if that's your scheduled day?
Correct.
No, that's how we're, for us, it's you get the holiday plus you get time and a half a day.
Yes, if you're working that day. Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, chief. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I've asked for, uh, an increase for thirty-one, twenty to ten, ten would be, uh, office furniture. So as you know, there are some things going around here with molder mediation, but then some also changes of employees and, um. Moving them some antiquated, uh, workspace. So I was looking for an increase in that line. Uh, of the extra fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars. Then.
That's where I had an office to put your furniture in.
I know. Then we've got thirty-one, twenty. Two, twenty, four, ten, which was added this year, and that was for the purchase of the speed signs.
How many does that buy us, chief?
That buys us four.
Do we use that, uh, that information for anything? I mean, statistically, it, it, it accumulates information, you know, how many speeders, maybe license plates, I don't know.
Nope. So the, the speed signs that we're getting, these are the ones that are mounted to the poles that just indicate somebody's speed. So that we wouldn't have any data on. It's the speed trailers that we, uh, get the data with.
And do we do anything with the data that we get from the trailers?
Yes. So what we'll do is we'll use that, a lot of times we get requests from the traffic commission. So they want information about that, so they'll help facilitate that information.
All right, thanks, chief. Keep going.
Um, we've got thirty-one, twenty. Uh, that's two fifty, ten, which is alterations and adjustments to uniforms. Just looking for a minor increase in that to five hundred dollars due to wear and tear on officer uniforms.
Is this a check they get or do they have to show receipts?
No, this is something else. They, they do get a separate allowance for, for uniforms and cleaning and shoes. This is something if they're, you know, they're working and something rips on their uniform, something.
I don't want to see any gravy stains.
No, definitely not. We've got thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, zero, five. So there were multiple, um, lines under new, new needs and subscriptions of just the dues going up. Um, on various lines there. So lines twenty, thirty, uh, forty, sixty. In some cases, minimal amounts of money. Line one, ten is new. That's for women in law enforcement and one twenty would be for FBI leader. So those are two new ones we added there. Uh, thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, oh, six, ten, conferences for chief and command staff. I've asked for an increase in that line, um, due to, um, having the ability to attend additional conferences. And trainings. Then we would skip down under thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, twenty-one, contract services. And there were several lines within this grouping that went up, just do an increase in fees. So line two eighty, uh, air cards. Three, ten is the dare program, because now we are, um. We are now in both schools, teaching their program in Rhineneck and in Marinerick. Uh, three twenty, which is Verizon online, uh, three sixty is clarity testing.
Chief, do we teach at the day school anymore?
We do not. No, we haven't told, we, we, I think we ended that in eleven or twelve, I think. Um, and they, I think they took up, there was, um, a changing of the guard, so to speak, uh, with the administration there, and. Uh, they didn't ask us to, to come back for that.
Good. Those years ago.
Yes. And then we have addition line four eighty, which was Nick Soli, so we added that. That was new. Line, um, eight, A thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, twenty-two. So we've got lines twenty and thirty, which is psychological examinations and employee fingerprinting. Due to us hopefully hiring in the near future, we need to increase those lines to cover those costs. Uh, then we skip down to thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, four, three, which would be training programs. So I've asked for an increase in various patrol functions as part of police reform. Um, additional trainings. Also, an increase in line one forty, which is advanced leadership and decision-making, since we promoted. Multiple, um, sergeants or officers to sergeants last year and went to lieutenant. There are different supervisory leadership programs, uh, under police reform that we can send them to. And then, uh, finally, eight thirty-one, twenty, zero, four, five, zero. We've added a line, line twenty for community engagement as part of. Yep.
Tactical rifle instructor training, that's seven hundred fifty, is that for just the instructor?
That's correct.
You, you ever take a mayor to that?
What have we said?
Have you ever taken a mayor to that?
No.
The little boy in me.
I wouldn't want them to use you as a target. You can't, it's not right.
Um, and then again, that finalized the community engagement, which is, um, again, as part of police reform to do some additional initiatives. For the community.
Yeah, so, so chief, we attributed, or I think we discussed an increase of about twenty-two thousand dollars in your budget. Due to, um, the police reform actions or, or objectives that we, that we wanted to achieve.
Yes.
Right. I do have, um, one line when you're done that I want to discuss briefly.
Yes, I am done.
Augie, thirty-one, twenty, oh, four, oh, eight. So what we did before we posted the tentative budget. Uh, when we realized that, um, fuel was going to start to, uh, be an impact. Uh, we raised everyone's fuel line by twenty percent. So there's an increase of nine thousand dollars in the fuel line, uh, just to make sure, although we're. Transitioning over to, to hybrids and, uh, potentially, you know, the. Uh, ideas to use less fuel, but we made sure that there's enough money in the line before we posted the tentative budget to cover the, uh, the four-dollar-plus. Gallon of gas. You know, which is not what we pay, but of course, you know, the increase is the increase.
Wha- what are we paying, Jerry? Over three?
We're paying, I think, around three now.
And that's because we don't get the, uh, federal, state and local taxes?
Yeah, we don't have to pay those taxes, like Connecticut. You don't have to pay the taxes in Connecticut now. If anyone, uh, hasn't realized that they could fuel up in Connecticut. Under the Ned Lamont gift of not paying taxes. On fuel.
Is, is he up for, uh, elections here?
Oh, you know, things happen when they happen. I don't know. I don't really pay attention to the cycle.
Okay, any questions for the chief from the board? No? Chief, uh, what I said to the fire department, uh, also goes for men and women in your department. Uh, you all went above and beyond the call of duty. They, they were harrowing days, uh, especially that night. I, I know, uh, there was a lot of wet police officers. And, uh, you know, the community really appreciates it. And, uh, thank you for everything you all do. Uh, from, uh, the, the brand new patrolman to yourself. You know, you all have the best intentions in the, you know, the, the good of the village and Marinerick at heart, and I really do appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And, and like I said, I apologize. I don't have that information in front of me. I, I had it here, so I will forward it over to you as soon as, so we get off the call.
No problem, chief. Anybody else have questions?
The chief is going to Albany tomorrow, right?
Yes, so tomorrow myself and Sergeant Banquet are going to Albany to accept the award from Mothers Against Drunk Driving and Stop DWI, uh, for. for Department of the Year in our efforts to curtail drunk driving, as well as Sergeant Banquet for his efforts, both as Sir of the Year and as a DRE.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, well, well done.
Terrific.
Safe travels.
Yes.
Yeah, I just have a comment, I think you're doing an exemplary job in what is probably one of the most discussions of the police budget that I've had the pleasure of attending. It's, the explanations were really good. There is a situation that I just found out about and sent an email about the construction on Marinerne Avenue that is creating a real hazard and safety problem for kids trying to board the bus by Knollwood. So when you have a bench, you might take a look at it, and Jerry, I sent that to you as well. As well, it's a county issue, and I've sent that to the county as well.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet, but what I can tell you is I did speak with somebody from the company on Friday, because they were, they had started the construction there, and they did not put a steel plate down where the bus stop is. So on Friday, they rectified that issue, so I'm not sure if that's the issue you're referring to, but I'll take a look at the email.
That's part, that's that's part of it, but the way the construction is, the bus won't stop because they don't see the people unless they're out in the street. So it's, it's explained in the email, you know, from a mother who has kids that are doing this. But it struck me as one of the unintended consequences of doing things without thinking through, and that's not your job. And that's not the village's fault, it's the county, you know, when they planned it out. But some, so something could be done, you know, relatively quickly, did, you know.
I passed that a little while ago, but I was leaving with just the woodworks. And we do have police officers out there directing traffic.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big deal with us, we won't let flag persons out there. We need police officers when it's in high traffic areas.
Yep.
All right, thank you, chief. Congratulations, have a good time.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm so moved.
For a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Not sure we ever opened it.